For us today, and we've asked for more, we're real dry. Lord, you're the one that gives all blessings, and we just ask you to provide that for us. I ask that tonight will be calm, and we make decisions that would honor you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to these Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we have a full plate tonight. Ms. Schultz, did you have something to say? Come up here if you have something to say.
Thank you, Judge. Good evening, gentlemen.
Come to the microphone so that-
I'm sorry, Lord. All right, good evening, gentlemen. I just have correction to make on line item seven of the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two Republican workers for the November eighth general election. I need to make a correction on an address there for David Pounds. It should be Henning Road instead of Henning Street. And also, Susan Klosner, her na- her last name was misspelled when I previously submitted, and that's Bethke Road, B-E-T-H-K-E. And I have a copy for each of you if you would like that.
Thank you.
Should I leave one for Alonzo?
He's not going to be here. I forgot to mention Alonzo. He's in Houston with a relative that's in the hospital.
Thank you, ma'am.
He will not be here tonight, and you need to remember him in your prayers, please.
You gave me two. Myra, you gave me two.
Mr. Clap Saddle?
Judge, Commissioners, I noticed that you all discussed some county, what you thought were county accounts last meeting, and I believe you voted to transfer those accounts. Had Judge, either you or the Treasurer, picked up the phone and called the Clerk's office, you would have found that those were District Court accounts, Registry accounts, with the exception of one, which was, does get some county funds into it, the E-file Court, which you, I suspect are familiar with, Judge. Those are not county funds. Just so you know, our county clerk is also District Clerk, and she handles things for the District Judges, and that's what those accounts are for. I think may- maybe y'all should apologize to the county clerk for having suggested that maybe she is doing something improper. Thank you.
I might bring it to your attention, sir, that we have a whole slew of non-taxpayer accounts in our depository bank. That's my only comment.
Okay. I don't know whether any of those are in the Clerk's office, but maybe you could look and see.
We'll be getting into that. Thank you, sir. All right. We're going to go to our pullouts in our consent agenda, page eight. Commissioner Morales, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Bruins, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Motion carries. Goliad Auto Parts, one thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second? Did I mess up?
I'll second it.
I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Motion carries. Highway Garage, two thousand sixty-six dollars. Motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Edwards on page fourteen, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Motion carries. The remainder of the consent agenda, questions, comments? No one has anything in need of motion to approve that, please?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move into the presentation of the outside financial audit that we just went through. If you want to step up to the microphone, I believe everyone has copies. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate you moving me to top of the agenda. I know this is your favorite one, that's why it's up there. I promise I'll be brief. I'm just going to hit some highlights. You can follow along and listen, I'm not going to make you fish through pages. But, and everybody probably knows this, this is your first audit in a few years. We're hired to make sure that this annual report that you're going to release to the public is accurate to within a small margin of error. And so we test those numbers, we work with your auditor and make sure these are good numbers. While we're doing that, we're hopeful that we're going to issue a clean opinion, which means we agree with everything in the report. And we got very close, there's just one minor technical issue that you're missing, and that's you allow your retirees to participate in your health insurance, and so that creates a liability to the county for future benefits to those retirees. Very common with counties, but you're required to have an actuary evaluate that plan and give you a liability to record on your financial statements for that plan, because it does generally create an unfunded liability, because you're accruing, they're accruing benefits as they're working, and you have to account for those as they're earning them, not when they actually retire. So, we've given you a clean opinion on these financial statements, except for the fact that you don't have that liability on the books. So, it's basically what you want, except for this thing that doesn't impact your budget or doesn't impact anything that you guys care about internally, just your annual report, there's a number that's missing. So, I just wanted to point that out. But, some financial highlights for last year, obviously your two main funds are the General Fund and Road and Bridge. And your, your General Fund was under budget in total, and it ended with more reserves than what your budget anticipated. So you ended the General Fund with six and a half million, which is about one year of your operating costs. Now, opinions vary on that, what's a good number to have, but in counties, generally between six and twelve months is considered healthy, and so you're right at the top end of that range. I would consider you to be fairly healthy from an operational standpoint in your General Fund. In your Road and Bridge, you were also under budget, and you ended with eight hundred and eighty thousand in reserves in your Road and Bridge, which is about eight months of Road and Bridge operations. Now, obviously, that doesn't take into consideration any kind of big capital needs you might have, so if you've got some big bridges or roads that need to be dealt with, that wouldn't take into account. But, just funding your budget, you've got a pretty healthy reserve in the Road and Bridge. Your, your pension with TCDRS is also well-funded. You have more funded in it than you need, so your contribution rates are really very low, so you're in a good position with your pension. And you also have the American Rescue Plan still out there, so it's about a million and a half that you have available to you, that is on top of what I've already mentioned. Those are just some brief highlights that are in this annual report. As we're doing our work, if we come across anything that we think you might be able to do better, or that you might need some improvement on, we'll bring that to your attention. And those come in different levels, so a material weakness would be the worst, a significant deficiency is a little worse than that, and then if we have some other recommendations, they'd be that bottom level. We didn't have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we thought you guys should know about, but we did have some minor things that are mentioned in the letter that goes with the annual report, and I was just going to briefly touch on those. One of them was about your pension plan. I think there was some confusion on part-time employees and whether they should be in that plan or not, and if you want to follow along, I'm on the bottom of page three.
I'm there.
Okay. So there's a couple people that were left off that should have been in the pension plan, and I think that's already been corrected, but they, they're going to be caught up in, in that plan. Only temporary employees and extension service employees are excluded.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
We were told that if they worked less than thirty hours a week, they did, they did not have to be included in that.
Unless they're temporary in nature, they need to be included in the pension plan.
So what's the number of hours?
There is no number.
There is no number?
Yeah, if they're a permanent employee, even if they're part-time, they would still be required to participate in pension plan.
So we can, we can reclassify them as temporary, part-time?
If they're, yeah, and I don't, I don't know the exact definition of temporary for TCDRS, but I would assume that would be, I don't know if you got any additional information from that, but I think it's only if you don't intend to keep them long-term, they would qualify to be excluded.
I think I got one. I think I've got one. Okay. All right.
Yeah. I think that was just the confusion, too. So if you think part-time, that doesn't mean they're not, they're out of the pension, they're, they're still in. On the top of the next page was the deposit reports, so you obviously get deposit reports from the different offices that, for the Treasurer to record, and we were looking at those, they kind of varied between the different offices, which you would expect, but those offices don't have a clear link between where they should go on the accounting records, and some of them had some errors on them in terms of what account they should be coded to for the Treasurer. So best practice is the Treasurer would receive it, and it would have the exact account codes to go to, so they don't have to really do a lot of thinking on their end. And since you're going through a software conversion, you're probably going to be changing that type of accounts, it's a good time to go to those offices and make sure that what they're giving the Treasurer's office is really clear and going to the right place.
Question?
Sure.
On the full-time, part-time, that's what I'm going to use it as, they should receive pension, now that's not, that's not considering health benefits, that's just pension.
Correct, so pension would be different than health benefits. You would have a different criteria. Usually it's full-time, or what they consider to be full-time for health benefits, which is thirty or thirty-two, I can't remember the number. But the five percent for the TCDRS, that's the county contribution, they would have, you would have to contribute that portion on, on their wages, assuming they're a permanent hire. The next one on four was the capital asset inventory, and so your financial statements are required to have a schedule that shows all of the assets that you purchased, and have those depreciated over time. And it does dual duty, it makes sure that the numbers in the report are good, but it also makes sure that you keep track of what you have, and that if, if you're not watching, then things can, can go, go away. And so, your county auditor did a good job of putting a list together as best she could, and we use that for the financial statements, but you want to make that a regular part of your process to make sure that you've got that on an annual basis, and you're checking what's on it. Again, you're going through a software conversion, which has a module for that, so we expect this to be corrected or improved next year. Second to last one is the number of funds in the county's financial statements. You have sixty funds, which is a little bit large for a county your size, and some of them didn't have a clear purpose, or were obviously kind of stale, and so we recommend that you kind of research how those funds got created and what the purpose of them is, and if there's not a particular purpose, the best practice is to close them into the General Fund. If you don't have, it doesn't have a restriction on it, then it probably should be in the General Fund. If you want to create a rainy day fund, that would be okay to have it in a separate place, but you'd want to have it be clear that it's a rainy day fund, so that everybody knows it's part of the budget process that you have, have that available to you. And then the last one, all of your separate offices may have separate bank accounts, and that aren't necessarily tracked by the Treasurer or the Auditor's Office, and so it's important that all those offices do perform regular reconciliations on those bank accounts, to make sure that everybody knows what's in them, in case they ever do get audited from the Auditor's Office, or, you know, we come asking. And so the county clerk, we weren't able to get copies of the reconciliations, and there were some questions about whether the bank statements were making it to the county clerk's office to do, to do those bank reconciliations, and so we're just making sure that the county works towards making sure that everybody has the information they need to perform their reconciliations, and they're doing it on a timely basis. And the main risk there is that if something goes through those accounts and you're not reconciling them, then you might lose track over time of what's in the account and what might need to be refunded to those fiduciaries. We've kind of mentioned earlier about the registry accounts, and that's what we're talking about here. That's really all I wanted to touch on.
So-
If you answer any questions.
The Treasurer brought up last week that there were some accounts that he didn't know about until we read your, this last paragraph here, and in order for him to have a place to view these accounts from, he requested that the accounts go into the depository bank. Do you agree or disagree with that presumption?
Well, I, I'm not an attorney, but I, I'll pretend one, so I'll put my, my fake attorney hat on. I don't know whether your offices are required to follow the same depository agreement. It would make sense if, but taking out the legalities of it, it would probably be a good idea. Any county, I would recommend that the Treasurer have some oversight in the Auditor's Office as well, mainly because there can be some large balances in those accounts, and anytime you have one person, that's the only person that has eyes on those accounts, that's when things can go wrong. Not to say that we found anything like that, but the more eyes you can have on something would be good, and the more difficult it is to, for people to see those, the more risk there is.
All right.
Well, I have a question also then about that, it's six hundred, you have, you have here six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, what, what is that money for?
Well, that's kind of the question. So part of it has to do with, you know, if you have a minor that's in an accident, and you're holding money until they come of age, you can have accounts with that, if you have cash bonds.
Do counties make, do that, I mean, is that a typical thing counties do, is hold money for an accident that a minor was involved with, or?
Right, so if there's a case, and there's a settlement from the case, but you can't necessarily give it to a minor, for whatever the legal reasons are, I don't know the legal reasons, but, so it's common for a county to have-
It is common.
It is common, until they, until they reach age, and then you release it to them. So that can be years, and so again, if you don't have really good records on what's in the account, then some, when people turn over, that's when you kind of lose track, so you want to make sure you have good records. Cash bonds are another one, where you're receiving the cash bonds from defendants, and then when their case is done and you refund those cash bonds, you have to keep track of what's in the account. And then some of the other ones are, if you have, you know, I don't know the technical term, but when you foreclose on a property for non-paying and you sell it, you have to keep that money for a certain period of time, in case they come back and try to reclaim their property, so that will sit in the account. That's, that's what's all in those accounts. I'm sure there's more that I don't even know about, but that's usually what's in there.
Are those accounts able to draw interest, and where does the interest go?
Some of them are, so the, the minor account, I believe draws interest. The other ones, you typically don't want them to draw interest, because it complicates the accounting of it, so if you've got multiple money in there, then it's, it's adding interest on top, and so it's hard. But, I don't believe, if I'm going off memory here, which is dangerous, but I don't believe that any of those are earning interest.
Okay. Thank you.
So my question is, so, the, who is, who is authorized to release these funds?
Well, by law, it would be the county clerk or slash District Clerk. It's, they're the ones that are in charge of those funds, and so they're usually the only ones that can sign on those accounts.
And I guess that would come from, the order to release them would come from a District Judge?
That might's a little bit above my pay grade, in terms of how it gets distributed, like who signs the order, but yes, generally there would be a disposition of the case, and it would say, it would give orders to say this is what it would be distributed. Now, who signs that, I'm not cer- super sure on that.
Okay, thank you.
So, something happened to one of those accounts, and there was five dollars missing out of one, and the person who rightfully owned that account decided he wanted to sue for that five dollars. Who's financially responsible for that money? Is it the Clerk's Office, or the county as a whole?
I would, I would venture, again, I'm going to put my attorney hat on, I would venture the county clerk would be responsible for that, but I imagine it would also, there would be some, at least, political blowback on the county for not setting up good procedures and processes to prevent that from happening.
All right. We appreciate your time, sir. Anyone else have a question?
Thank you.
Well, if you wake up in the middle of the night and you have a question, you know, feel free to reach out. I'm happy to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a four or five election agenda items that have to be done due to time constraints. The first one is to approve a order of election for November eighth, twenty-twenty-two general election. You have the paperwork in front of you. If you don't have any questions, I need a motion to approve that, please.
I'll make a motion, we approve that?
Need a second, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, approve notice of election, approve the notice of election for the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two general election. Same thing, it's all mu- it's just a little bit different wording there.
I'll make a motion, we approve that.
Need a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion, we approve that one, also.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the polling locations for November eighth, twenty-twenty-two general election. Ms. Schultz had a couple of changes. They should be reflected in the, in the paperwork. Need a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The last one is approve list of presiding judges and alternate judges for two-year term, county elections beginning on November the eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Need a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make a motion, we approve that one.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chief Deputy Futch, consider approval of submission of a fiscal year twenty-twenty-two MAG grant for the Goliad County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Futch, report to the stadium office. Can you tell us about this grant, please?
It's an, it's a state-funded grant for, that covers motor vehicle crime prevention, it's under the Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority. What we want this grant for, and it also has to do with border, border security, motor vehicle thefts, we're wanting the grant for an ALPR, an Automatic License Plate Reader. It only covers a certain amount, but if we can get that grant, we'll come up with the, the fund someplace else. We tried to get it in the, in the last grant through the state for the, the one that they had, they had just passed, but we weren't able to, we weren't able to get it, so they came up with, with this particular one, and it's, it's actually specific to the ALPR.
Any questions for Chief Deputy Futch?
So how, approximately, how much is, is that, is the license plate reader?
They're about forty thousand.
Forty thousand, okay, and that, that is interconnected with the other?
Yes, the, we're, we're looking at, at a specific one, I can't remember the, the actual name of it, it's the GEOs, Refurio has, has one, but we're going to have these to where they're, they're interconnected, and we're actually working on some of the, the southern counties that is, is part of a, that we have MOUs with, and they're going to try to get, get some as well, and that way they're all, they're all interconnected.
Excellent.
So we purchased one of those several years ago. It was in a little black, short-bed truck?
Mm-mm.
No? That wasn't-
Well, we, yeah, we did, we had a grant, when I was sheriff, we had one, but that was, it was mounted on the car, and it had cameras, and the company that we dealt with went under, so it, it became obsolete.
Okay.
And that was back in probably two thousand and eight or nine.
Yeah, it's a while back.
Yeah, way back, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Futch?
I'll make a motion, we, were we considering a motion on this?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve this FY twenty-two MAG grant for the Goliad County Sheriff's Office.
Need a second, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, we need to recess the Commissioners' Court meeting and go into the public hearing on the budget.
We have the indigent, we have the indigent, we have the indigent defense.
I forgot about that one, here we go.
Let's do that one.
The lawyers are heavily involved in this. We use a, we use an organization called TLRA, Texas Real Grand Legal Authority, and the cost went up, sixty thousand dollars, because we're doing a lot more business. As a matter of fact, with our fuel budget, the indigent defense, and what was the other one? What was it? Insurance. Those three items constitute over three hundred thousand dollar increase in expenditures. So, anyway, this is a resolution saying that we, we will apply for the grant, they'll get us the grant, they're going to increase our funding, so that we won't have to pay more than sixty thousand dollars. I think it's sixty-two thousand, right around there. So, in order to apply for this grant, they want us to pass the resolution in Commissioners' Court, so here we are. I need a motion to approve it, please.
Okay, before we do, can I, I, I want to ask a question, and so, so how much are we, how much are we paying now?
Our call, thirty-something.
Okay, so we're going to go from thirty to sixty, if we get this grant, if we do a resolution and get a grant, then we'll, we'll, we won't pay thirty, we'll pay sixty thousand.
We will pay sixty, and the state's going to chip in more, and we've been assured that that's going to happen. But, the, the alternative to doing this is going on what they call the wheel, and it's basically a, a wheel with all the lawyers' names that serve as defense attorneys in Goliad, and what that seems to cause is a sharp increase in resets, which drives our cost up, it clogs up our county court system, as well as the district court system. So, we've been very pleased with TLRA, they handle our indigent defense, they handle our juvenile, we think that, that they do a good job. So, they came to me and says, you have to pass this resolution, so that we can get the grant for you, so that's what we're trying to do here. Our cost is going to be sixty-two thousand dollars, though.
Okay, from thirty to sixty-two?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution.
I need a second, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now-
All right, here we go. Now, we're going to recess our Commissioners' Court meeting and go into our public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Goliad County proposed budget. So I need a motion to recess, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're going to do the, conduct a public hearing on fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. This is open to the public, anyone that has a comment can step up to the microphone and put your two cents worth in. Anyone?
Three minutes, okay, three-minute limitation?
Three-minute limitation on that as well. We are very, very, very tight this year. We, we ran very tight last year, and with the three hundred thousand dollar increase, plus we had some tobacco settlement money that we plugged into the equation last year, little bit of COVID money, we plugged into it, we had a balanced budget. This year is going to be very, very close. Right now, I think we're about a hundred thousand dollars red right now. Having said that, one of the things that I was very glad to see, in nineteen through twenty-one, we accrued about two and a half million dollars more than we had in the bank when we stepped into the position, and we haven't done the audit for the year we're in, but I anticipate that we're going to have another increase in our rainy day fund. So, there's possibility that we may- So, there's possibility that we may spend a hundred thousand dollars of it because I'll tell you, I'm not aware of anything else we can cut. We're just, these commissioners will be happy to tell you that they run on shoestring budget. Every office in this county, clerk's office, treasurer, everyone runs on a shoestring budget, library, everyone. So, we're hoping that we'll have some revenue soon. We'll see how that works out. So, is there anyone else that has anything to say about the budget? Otherwise, we're going to close it and go back to our commissioner's court meeting.
Does that include us?
I'm sorry?
Does that include us if we have any questions?
Speak up.
Okay. So, we had an auditorium meeting last week and did our budget, and did she send that to you, Sherry or Kelly? They were supposed to send that to you. We, we've come up with some more repairs that, that need to be done. The archways in the, in the basement area where the people walk through. That one south archway is about to fall. It's very loose. And then, the doors in, in, we talked about some tables and chairs that were easier, easier to handle because of the old wooden ones that we have in there. And, what was the other? It was, oh, there's still some leakage in the basement that through those stands, there's still some cracks that, that need to be sealed when the wind blows the rain into the, the stadium area. The other ones got fixed very well, the, the ones that were leaking on the floor on the inside auditor. But, anyway, we came up with a, around a fifty thousand dollar budget total for the, for the auditorium. And, and I would like to increase that, the county's portion twenty-five, or to twenty-five thousand, from fifteen to twenty-five. See if that can be fit in there somehow. It's not going to be a check written to the auditorium. Of course, if we don't get the work done, we, we, but we've gone through there and just looked at some different, some other repairs to, to do. Electrical up on the stage, I believe, sound system, things like that.
Have you all thought about trying to apply for some more grants? Because the last deal we did was three hundred thousand there. We can't find another grant for fifty, sixty?
Yeah, Sherry, I think, was looking into some of that. And, but this there, again, this is not a check written to the auditorium committee. It just, it just put in the budget. If nothing gets done, then, then we don't use it.
Well, as I started the, my comments off with, we're in the red.
Right.
Getting the grants, a pretty good idea. We refurbished the entire, almost the entire auditorium with grant money. And I think we can probably find some to do it again. And we will, if we want to put change in the contract on an agenda, we can certainly talk about that, but we can't talk about it tonight. But, if you want to change the contract, we can discuss that in a later meeting.
Okay. Well, the wall, the wall is the most important. It's, it's, the wall, you can push on it and it moves. It's very dangerous. So, that's...
We don't have, come up to the microphone.
When it is rented out, who gets the money? Is it divided fifty-fifty when the auditorium is rented out? I'm just curious. I don't know.
The way it works is there's supposed to be an auditorium account that, that is, that is managed by the auditorium committee.
Right.
And I think we have a maximum input of fifteen, five thousand dollars. So, we're, we would have to change the, the contract, the MOU that we, inter-local agreement that we have with the city in order to do any of this, and it's not on the agenda, so we can't do it tonight.
Right, but, but like when someone rents it out, the money goes into that general...
It goes into that operating fund that's managed by the auditorium.
Yes, we have, have...
I was just curious.
Yeah, we have...
Since it kind of became county and county.
We go, like, like everywhere else, you go back to the previous year and you kind of figure out what, what brought, what, what your electric bills were, your utilities, what your rentals, what, what you got on them, and, and that's kind of basically how we come up with a budget.
I was just curious because I wasn't sure how it worked since we've kind of cut it in half.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else on the public hearing aspect of tonight, we're going to close the public hearing and reconvene to commissioner's court. So, we're back in session with commissioner's court. Anyone have any public announcements they would like to make? Anyone?
I have one. School starts Thursday. School buses will be running Thursday morning. Kids will be running crazy at the school, so hold your breath.
And they got, they got behind on the Frankie Road Bridge. The contractor had to finish another project, so he's hoping next week. So, that's how that always works, next week.
I need a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.